This is the time and place for the public hearing, Monday, August 12th. Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Ms. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here. I'll go over the order, how things are gonna go. First, I'm gonna have the opposition to the rezoning spend the first 30 minutes. Anna has that, I guess, under control, gonna call out. She's got y'all's order. The next 15 minutes, I'm gonna give a chance for anybody who's here for this. If there's no one here for this, then I'll give a little extra for that. And then the last 15 minutes will be for the developer to answer any questions that were brought up during that time. Okay? So with that being said, Anna? Then you have three minutes at the microphone. Please come to the microphone and state your name before you start.
You may want to tell them that they'll have an opportunity to give together information later.
Oh, yes. Before we begin, though, at the end of this, I want you to know that in case there's something comes up and you think of something later, we're gonna open it up for a week that you can either email Ms. Phillips or mail it in to Ms. Phillips here at City Hall, and that way she can get it to all of us. So, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Austin Weddington. I already signed in.
Okay.
Hello, council members, mayor, fellow neighbors. If you don't already know, my name's Austin Weddington. Me and my family's lived on Simron Drive for almost 20 years, and as you can see, I'm against rezoning this property. I just wanna start off by saying we appreciate the council, the mayor, and the planning commission, what all you do. I know it's not easy, and people are always quick to complain, so I wanted to take time to thank you for all you do for the people of Scottsboro.
Thank you.
I entitled my speech "Someplace Special." It's on the Scottsboro signs, "We consider Stonebridge someplace special." We don't want it to become "was" someplace special. I hear everyone say, "We need housing." I never really thought of it before, because I never, since we've lived there, I never wanted to move. Before, we lived in the county, and you never knew what was gonna be built right beside you. That's the good thing about zoning ordinances. It keeps lot things together, and there's a place for everything. You wouldn't put a McDonald's in the middle of a subdivision. We're asking you to not put a distinctively different neighborhood in the middle of ours. After the planning commission voted against rezoning, the landowner told me that he tried to develop this property twice now as R1 without any luck. I don't know the particulars. I've heard it was because new subdivisions had to have sidewalks, curbs, and street gutters. I don't know if that was the case or not with this property. I do know the additional cost adds to, or the additional infrastructure can really add to the cost. That brings me to my proposal. I'm asking, is there something that can be done to negotiate a deal to get this developed as R1? We're asking you to vote no on rezoning and work out a deal so everyone wins. We're asking you to figure out a way to add the additional housing needed on the existing R1 zone, and here's some advantages. Traffic will be less, less homes equals less cars. Water problems won't be as bad, more ground to soak up the water, less roofs and concrete, less runoff, although the water will be a concern no matter what. The neighborhood feel won't change, the new section would match the rest, it won't affect everyone's property values. If the new section stays R1, the neighborhood would support it. We support the growth, we support building, not the rezoning. David Patrick would get to finish what he started and sell the property, the city council would get the added housing, Scottsboro would get the taxes. Lastly, we already have R3 housing going in on Phillips Drive and Gant Hill Road just down the street from us. We need R1 through R6 housing also. It would be good to have a variety in the city for people to choose from. If you build it, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tony Beal. My wife, Valerie, and I relocated to 905 Simmon Drive in August of '21. My in-laws moved to Stonebridge in October of 2018. The reason why we all pick Stonebridge and Scottsboro is a hometown feel of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is one in which people can be seen walking the streets in the neighborhood with one another with their children and pets. Children can be seen playing in their front yards, neighbors can be seen conversing with one another. It is a neighborhood that will change in the feeling of safeness if the zoning is changed due to traffic and the waddle. I believe changing the third phase of Stonebridge from R1 to any other zoning will change the feel of the neighborhood. My reasoning behind this feeling is the water problems that we have now and we face every time it rains, and then, and the increase of the traffic that will be coming our way. I work in Madison every day. I make that drive. There's other people from Scottsboro and from Stonebridge who works in Hansfield and Madison also. The reason why I want to live in Stonebridge and Scottsboro is the neighborhood feel. The younger adults that I work with in Madison wants what we all have in Stonebridge. They want a yard, they want a house where their kids can play. I fell in love with the city of Scottsboro in the late 1990s. I used to come down here and fish all the time. Love this town, love the neighborhoods. It took me almost six months to find a house with a yard. I talked to some real estate agents. Right now, we only have 80-some houses total. Only half of them is R1, that's fully. I do not believe we need to change this from R1 to R3. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Mike Kirkland. My wife, Karen, and I live in Stonebridge on Simron Drive in the home we purchased in 2011. This was to be our forever home. I've been asked today to address the council by the many other families living in Stonebridge. First off, we would like to thank the city council for the opportunity to have our voices heard by elected officials. We're fortunate to live in a society where people's voices can affect change. One of our many concerns around the city's proposal to change the existing 50-year R1 zone designation of our subdivision to R3 relates to how this change would diversely affect the amount of rainwater the lower areas would have to deal with. This is a concern especially since there's already an issue with handling existing runoff. We must assume that since the city has gotten to the point that we are considering a vote by the council to rezone, that certain due diligence has already been done. According to the state of Alabama, before rezoning an area, the planning commission must be notified and their recommendation presented to the city. And that was done, we attended the meeting, and I believe that the, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, that the zoning commission asked to not rezone, was their recommendation. Alabama law states that the upper landowner may alter the flow of surface water to improve his property as long as it does not unduly burden and damage the property of the lower owner by increasing the volume and velocity of the surface water dispersed. It also states that only in exceptional circumstances can this be overruled, and then only after a jury considers whether an exceptional situation actually exists. Assuming there was some investigating done on how the change from 150-foot wide lots to 60-foot wide lots, and the additional water that would runoff instead of soaking in the permeable soil, does anyone know that if that's been done? Jackson County, Alabama receives an average of 50 inches of rain annually. That equals over 68 million gallons of water on 50 acres. That's 1 in 3/8 million gallons in a 1-inch rain event. If Zone 3 structures and roads cover 50%, more than Zone 1, that's 687,500 gallons in addition to what we are dealing with now for a 1-inch rain event, or over 34 million gallons annually. Not only must we consider the proposed zoning change that is, as it affects existing ability to handle runoff, but the completion of the access road on the eastbound side of 72 and the businesses that go along that would likely affect that also. We would like to propose no change to the current designated zoning, and an environmental impact study be done before any future development.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Brian?
Brian? I live on Brian, and I live at 1302 Simron Drive. City council members, I'm looking for a few honorable men and women to stand up for what's right for Stonebridge and keep Scottsboro special. Some of the council members, these developments like these being proposed to us, this is all well and good, but what you see is only seen on the outside. Every development has its own development and engineering problems. You can look at 100 like this, and everyone's different. The spokesman for the project said that he would work closely with the city engineers. Well, our engineers have been involved in numerous projects, and there are still problems. And I don't think that they'll, there'll be, this will be anything different. We have a lot of concerns. There's a lot of houses being flashed on the screen at one of the meetings. Even the developer himself said he didn't know what houses would be built. Everyone he talked to says something different. Seems like something changes every meeting. Nothing is definite. Even the map that was sent out is just lip service. What is the truth and what is being covered up? Every tree in this proposed property consumes an average of 10 to 150 gallons of water daily. Concrete, asphalt, and tar consumes nothing. Are these houses gonna be built on slabs? Are they gonna have a crossface? This has not even been addressed to the people. The gentleman that did the presentation to the city council is a salesman, trying to convince you to buy his product. Then you can either accept it or reject it. A good salesman will make a product very appealing, knowing when to push forward and to pull back on his presentation. Right now's the perfect time to present this proposal because it's dry. In the wintertime, when it is covered with water, it wouldn't look so appealing. I noticed in his presentation, he said he would work closely with the engineers, which gave him a perfect out in case something went terribly wrong. Shifting the blame to others is always a good strategy. A good salesman cannot sell ice to an Eskimo. Are you council members gonna buy his ice? Men and ladies of the council, let your yays be yay and your nays be nay. For whatever's more than this, this one lady won. That's Matthew 5:37. Thank you for reading.
Thank you.
All right, to pile up. Okay, which one's which?
That one, sir. Twenty right over here.
Got my bridge. Very good. Thank you.
I'm Gary Maddox.
And go ahead.
And I live at 102 Golden Rod, which is not technically in Stonebridge, it is land adjacent to it, so we do have an interest, as we all do there, along the Byron and then the Madison subdivision. The first thing I wanna do before I get into making an argument one way or the other is to, basically, an observation, I think that this has gone way too far. It has gone personal, and people have gotten their feelings hurt, we got neighbors against neighbors, we got citizens against citizens, that's not what was intended. And for my part, if I have said anything that has offended you, or if I have posted anything that offended you, or anyone in the audience, I apologize. Sometimes a redneck just creeped right out, and I'm sorry. With that said, let's lighten the mood a little bit, let's play a game. Price is Right. All right. So what's the price of this home? And we have these homes in Newmarket, that's what we've been, you know, comparing to. So there's a large subdivision down in Newmarket. I went by last Thursday, looked at it. So what are we talking about with affordable housing? This is what it looks like from the end of the street. Now, I can tell you, if we developed that where it is, and you go over to Gino's and have a couple of beers, you better count carefully when you go home, because all these houses look the same. You may go in three before you find the right one. This is the surrounding area. Again, it was developed in that empty patch up there, but if you look at it, if you go over there, and I know a lot of folks out, it's primarily rural. I took that picture, I took all those pictures myself. At the entrance of it, there's still a commercial garage sitting there. It is bordered by non-R1 housing on both the south and the west. Bottom line, it does not look anything like Stonebridge. So, price is right, what's the cost? I've heard these houses are gonna be anywhere from 1400 to 2200 square feet, and I was guessing $200 a square foot. Donna Frederick, you gave me the number, Mr. Noel last week, you said he was a nice guy, wanted to call. Donna, you're right. Mr. Noel is a really nice guy. I enjoyed the conversation. I would love to go over to Gino's and have a beer with him if he wants to do that when this is over, but...
He's tired.
Depending on how this goes. But, you know, affordable housing is one of those things that is like mom and apple pie in that ladder race, we all love it. Yeah, we all want affordable housing. But this $357,000 for a 1700 square foot house on a 5-foot wide lot, that's less width than what the lobby is out there. But, Mr. Noel, nice guy that he is, is gonna tell you, he cannot sell R1 houses, he does develop R1 houses, develops R3s or R6s. So what's the difference? Our answer's another, 1700 square foot house, you pay $20,000 down, financing for 30 years, payment's about $25,000. Now, all things considered, if you're building that house on one lot or two lots, the house is the same, which means you gotta buy a second lot. So if we assume that a lot is about $30,000 each for a 50-foot lot, then you gotta buy another 30,000-foot lot, and gonna do some landscaping on it? I don't see any house in Newmarket that would want to do a $10,000 worth of landscaping, but we'll put it on there anyway. You run the numbers, pipe is 2837, the last is $260 a month, to get an R1 house with a normal yard. Now again, Mr. Noel's a fine man, just wanna tell you, there's all kinds of trends out there that you can't sell, he can't sell, can't make money. Look, I don't know about trends. I know that you can go on the internet and find almost any argument to any question you have on either one. I know anecdotally, working at UAC, I've had over 1,200 students work for me in the last 20 years, they've asked me for all kinds of advice, many times, about buying a house, and I always say, "Go buy a house." I've never had, never had, students say, "I don't want yard work, I don't want a big yard, I want an easy big yard, I want it squeezed in that big yard." They don't say that. They want a yard that their children could play in safely, they want a neighborhood that's like this, where people know each other, and walk dogs, and enjoy themselves. That's what we have, and that's not what's being proposed. So in conclusion, everybody here that is against on, I've not heard one person say we're against R1 housing. We respect Mr. Patrick's right to develop that, we just don't respect that it should be changed in the rules in the middle of a game. There's 116 houses being built a mile down the road. If anyone can't afford that extra $260, you've got 116 opportunities to buy a house down there that you're not able to afford, and I would, we all agree with that. But you don't want to put the marketplace with the same type houses, you don't want 276 near identical products to sell. If, you know, the most popular truck right now is a white L-150.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my end?
It is more than, we got a little late start on it.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I think most of you know me, I'm Jason Haas, but please know I'm not here in any kind of official capacity. I'm here this evening to support my fellow citizens, and my mother, and her husband, who live in the Stonebridge community. First, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for allowing us to speak and to hear from your constituents. I know well that being a public servant is a thankless and difficult job, and often requires you to make hard decisions that wins you very few friends. I want to begin by stating that while I'm here to advocate for the residents of Stonebridge, I have no animosity at all towards the landowner, the developers, or any supporters of this project here tonight. Again, because they're simply advocating for their interests. After we speak, these fine people will make cogent arguments as to why this project will benefit Scottsboro and promote growth, and I'm not here to dispute that in any way. The goal of my plea this evening is to explain that our group is not against development or growth for Scottsboro. We'd love for the landowner, the developer, and those supporters who have a vested interest in seeing this project to fruition to make the money and to promote the growth that they desire. Instead, I simply ask for compromise to be found that will suit all of our interests, including the residents of Stonebridge, which are your constituents. Again, we're happy to see Mr. Patrick's land to be developed in accordance to how the land is currently zoned, as you've heard before me. Again, this would allow for land, for the landowner to benefit, and also to promote growth, while protecting the interests of your constituents. If the developer and others here would, would, I'm sorry, if the developer and others here who would profit from this development wish to maximize their profits by developing R3 or higher residences, higher occupancy residences, we propose alternates. For instance, Southland Realty owns 43 acres of land along the South Broad Street in Bob Jones area, and this land is zoned for R3 development and is available for sale. This is where I live. When I purchased my land and built my home, I understood that this area was zoned this way. And again, that's evidence that no one here is against the development and growth here in Scottsboro. I'm advocating for a project where I live, for this project. So there are many additional sites within our city limits that also will be available for such development and will promote growth and economic investments for our developers and subcontractors, while not encroaching upon the interests of the longtime residents of Stonebridge. So I close with a plea to you, our city council, to make this decision with a names towards compromise. I realize this issue has grown contentious, and there are folks with some hard feelings that come when folks have competing interests. We realize that not everyone has acted calmly or rationally in conveying their point of view. I encounter these types of problems daily in my walk.
Coach, that's 30 minutes.
I'm almost, can I finish, or?
We got one sentence?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I encounter these types of problems daily in my walk as a public servant, but I can't let the way I feel towards a person or a group cloud my judgment as to what is best for those I serve, and I realize this can be hard, so I'll quit there.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jim Oldenese. I've lived on Hood Avenue for 48 years. We moved here, we never moved. We considered moving, but we loved the neighborhood and we never did, and we're glad we didn't. I served 20 years on the planning commission. First five years overlapped with the ending of the term of the longtime chairman, Norm Greed. I learned a lot from Norm. Here are some of the items. Rezoning requests are the most controversial, they come before the planning commission. Rezoning requests from R1s, the most restrictive to anything else, is even more controversial, and that's why we're here tonight. Do not mix zoning within neighborhoods, is a lesson I learned from Norm. Great care should be exercised to protect the property and home values of people who have bought homes in the neighborhood. Want to focus on property values, since most of us in the room, our home is our biggest investment. I would wager a bet that nobody in this room would ever want to own a house that is next door to, A, a house that has a lot size 40% less, and a road frontage 40% less than the house I own. A house that most likely has less square footage than what I own. A house for sure that has a value and selling price less than the value of my home. And why is that? Because they know the value of a larger house on a larger lot size will be negatively impacted by a lesser-priced house that is on a much smaller parcel of land and probably less square footage. A lot of buyers will be inclined to purchase a more expensive house in the neighborhood if they can get something in the same, will be less inclined to purchase a more expensive house if they can get something in the same neighborhood a lot less expensive. This is not rocket science. Every homeowner knows this, and prays that the new house being built next to them will be to the same standards, on the same lot size as theirs, knowing that otherwise, their home value will suffer. Mixing zoning in the neighborhood explodes this scenario of a single homeowner's home value being reduced to every home in the neighborhood being negatively impacted. In closing, real estate agents sell houses and lots. Landowners and developers sell neighborhoods. This property in question is part of an R1 zone neighborhood that Mr. Patrick has envisioned for many, many years, probably 50 years. The property in question is part of an R1 zone neighborhood that homebuyers have been buying into for almost 50 years. Before buying, homeowners knew that all this property was owned R1, so they felt safe in their investment in the neighborhood. They trusted Mr. Patrick to develop the property as originally promised, maybe not explicitly, but certainly clearly understood by all the homeowners. Now homeowners in this neighborhood are placing their trust in members of the city council to reject the rezoning and to keep the implied promises that have been in place for almost 50 years.
Thank you, Mr. Oldenese.
Hey, I'm Freddie Tidmore, and most of y'all know who I am, but first I want, I'll close it out pretty much for us. Some of them, if there's time, they want to speak. First, we want to thank each member of the city council for taking time the past few weeks to talk to us on the issue of rezoning, and while we may not agree on a lot of aspects, I hope that you respect the passion by which our neighbors have approached this rezoning issue. Please, please, don't misinterpret our passion for disrespect. We don't disrespect you. We may differ from you in a lot of ways, but we don't, we're not disrespectful. In the past few weeks, we've been confused at times, we've been angry at times, and we've always been passionate. We've been confused as to why our beautiful and peaceful neighborhood was singled out for rezoning while alternate sites were available. We've been confused as to why rezoning issue was carried forward after the Scottsboro Planning Commission denied the request by JN Investments and the same rezoning request on June 4th. We've been confused on to why our city needs 266 new R3 zoned houses in a two-mile radius. A number of homes that if occupied by four members in each home would amount to the population growth of 6.8%, 10 times the city growth rate at this time. The city growth rate's around .6%. We've been angry and left wondering why our property values would suffer, because most of us, in fact, all of us have worked hard all our life to buy these homes that will someday be left to our children and our grandchildren as our inheritance. We've been confused and left wondering about what happens to the water that's halted this development on this property in the past, and that invades our backyards and houses during wet times. We've been confused and left wondering about the impact of increased traffic, of the doubling of the number of homes in a two-square-mile area will no doubt lead to. We've been confused and a little bit hurt at the voices of why we were not more adequately represented on this zoning issue. We felt ignored at times. In closing, we want to reemphasize, we are not opposed to the growth of this city. We are not opposed to building houses. What we are opposed to, however, is rezoning our neighborhood in the hopes of luring restaurants and shopping to our city. We feel that developing the area under the existing R1 zoning regulation... We feel that developing the area under the existing R1 zoning regulation would allow for growth while allowing our neighborhood to remain one of the most desirable areas in the city. So this is not about building R1 houses because, excuse me, R3 houses. I'm sorry, let me go back. We are not opposed to building R1 houses. All right, we're not opposed to that. We're opposed to rezoning and building R3 houses. All right. Now, we can't understand how growth would be limited or stopped by the reduction from 256 all R3 houses to a 195 houses, both R1 and R3.
Thank you, Mr. Tidmore.
I got just another little bit and I'll close. In report, in a report published by the Alabama League of Municipal Housing.
So you're not going to let anybody else talk?
Entitled, entitled, "Zoning in Alabama." It states that the goal of municipal zoning ordinances is to lessen the congestion in the streets, to provide safety from fire, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of the land, to facilitate adequate provisions for transportation, water, sewage, schools and parks, and other public requirements, and to conserve the value of the buildings. We would ask you, the city council, to understand that we feel that we should have a say, and that say should be no to rezoning our neighborhood.
Before going further, I don't know if anybody's here for this or has the guts to stand up in front of all y'all that's here for this. Is there anyone here for this that wants to speak tonight? Because if not, I'm, just a second, I was gonna make sure. Anna, will you check the list? I want to, if somebody signed up first, I want to give them the opportunity first for being here and signing up that hadn't spoke. And we can do two more then before I give it.
What's your name?
Ronnie.
Ronnie's the next person on the list.
Great.
Appreciate y'all giving me a few minutes to talk. My name's Ronnie Dickey. I live at 1106 Cimarron Drive. I was introduced to Scottsboro 20 years ago as a Marine Corps recruiter. First chance I could, I made it my home. I chose Stonebridge because of that layout, because of the way that neighborhood is. I picked a local real estate agent to send me that home, so I feel like I'm part of the community. Do have a little bit of experience working in government, 19 years with City Huntsville Police Department and code enforcement. I have a minstresspect for you. Obviously, I love Scottsboro, and that is in large part by the decisions that you make on a day-to-day basis as elected officials. I got a lot of experience in traffic control, whole lot of experience in traffic, and that's really my only concern. I'm not against development. Go ahead, nobody's stopping anyone from building a house on that land right now. But I do want to read two quotes from the National Cooperative Highway Research Program. I can give this report to anybody that'd like it, if you really like boring material. Resident safety decreases as traffic through their neighborhood increases, thereby decreasing their quality of life. Children are especially likely to be at risk as traffic increases through the neighborhood. Another quote, in general, as transportation changes, change that impedes pedestrian or local traffic in the area, it hinders community cohesion. So as you start this new development, we will not have sidewalks to walk on. I've seen no map that will give an exit route to Byron or to Highway 72 for the new development. So please don't upset up for duplex to be built in our backyard. I'll also add that I have a minstresspect for government. I've worked for the City of Huntsville again for 19 years. We elect you to be our voice. You're one of us. Not smarter, not better, you're one of us, and we entrust you with our voice. You have to make a lot of hard decisions. I understand that. This is not a hard decision. We're just asking you to be our voice.
Thank you. Okay, this will be the last one, and I will open it up for the developer to respond.
My name's Carl Lester. I'm a retired engineer with NASA. I've lived on Byron Road for 37 years and really like it. They couldn't blast me out with dynamite. Having said that, I'd just like to give a point of view from somebody that lives on the County Park side of Byron. So I'm not as close to the problem that has been discussed here tonight as some folks are. But I can tell you from experience, if you try to back out of your driveway from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock, you better be patient. You'll look down one side of Byron and here'll come four cars. You'll let them pass, look the other way toward County Park, and here's three more. Speed limit's 35 miles an hour on that road, which I think is too high. I'd like to see it 25. But you get my point. We add 150 high-density houses. That translates into 300 cars to an already overcrowded road. There's no way to get out of there without getting on Byron Road. And from an engineering standpoint, it just does not make sense to put R3 or R6 requirements piggybacking off of an R1 infrastructure. It's plain and simple. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. You go on?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's David Patrick. The, I'd like to give you just a little bit of backstory on kind of how we got to where we are. I have been before the Planning Commission four times in 19 years to try to get third, the third edition of Stonebridge built, just like Cimarron and just like Byron. I was told that, by the Planning Commission, that you must have curb, gutter, and sidewalk. None of the rest of it has it. People like it. I mean, I asked a lot of the neighbors in the neighborhood prior to that meeting, and they'd like to keep it all looking somewhat similar. And so I was denied in 2005, brought it again in 2009 with a change of people on the Planning Commission. 2000, skip, far ahead, 2019, twice. I presented it again, and the Planning Commission did waive the sidewalks because they said that it really wouldn't get you anywhere to another sidewalk. And I said, well, that makes sense. And so the curb issue was, was brought up, and when this, when this part of the subdivision was initially laid out and the subbase roads were put in, ditches were put in, and ditches are still out behind the curb unless things have changed. The overall width of the street, it gets into a lot of different little technicalities, but the width, the width of the street was not going to be an easy thing to overcome with curb and the ditches, which had already been engineered. So at one of the, I think it was the 2019 meeting, the first one, I'm, excuse me, I'm having to go off memory. The Planning Commission said that this was a new development, and therefore it would fall under the current subdivision construction regulations, curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So the, I think it was the previous council or part of the previous council made it where it would be more available to, to go there, to keep it, no curb, no gutter, just like the rest of it. There was a lot of discussion about it, but the homes there, I lived there too for a long time on Byron, the homes, the ditches in front of the homes are very well kept. People keep their yards immaculate, which, I mean, this looks great. It works, it's functional. And then came the water problems. Well, going through there after a really, really heavy rain period, we, I noticed that a home close to, on Larry Drive had red clay stains on a white fence. And after a lot of investigation, we figured out that probably a fourth, possibly, there's no way to gauge this really, to maybe a third of the water comes from across Highway 72 where Sherwin-Williams was built and Carlisle's built the restaurant in, in area. We don't have any red clay over that I know of that would come up on these people's fence. So after the hard rains, you could see the water coming under 72, over to Larry. And that has been a problem since that was developed across the street. So what I wanted to say today was that I have tried four times to get this done as a R1, just like it says, just like Byron, just like Cimarron, shot out of the saddle every time. And so when this, when the developers contacted me, potential developers contacted me, said, you know, let's try it and see where it goes. We'll just see how it works out. And what I have seen online of their products, they offer a great product, and they, and one thing that they have brought to it, they offer a solution for the water problem.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Let me get them.
I saw. All good. Appreciate it, y'all.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna be speaking to you because I don't think I can convince anybody behind me or change anybody's mind behind me.
Well, just the main thing, speak to the questions I have, concerns up.
So, and I've got a little presentation that will probably answer a lot of the concerns and questions that you may have. I don't know that I can convince anybody or change anybody's opinion about what we're trying to do, but I think that there are some, some valid points that, that can be brought up and, and the discussion. If you will make the next slide there. You know, this development, we're looking at a maximum of, you know, we, we could feasibly get 170 lots in there. We know we're gonna lose lots because we've got to deal with the water. So we know we're gonna have to do detention, we're gonna have to do ditching, we're gonna have to do things that are required by, by the engineers in order to facilitate the drainage. And I'll address that a little bit further down, down to this, but, you know, we propose to do some kind of a green space or something as a buffer between the R1 existing and the R3. We know about drainage, we, everybody here knows about drainage. And, you know, what we're looking at doing is, we see a need in Scottsboro for, for development. I think it's been evident since the day we first came here that there is a need for more residential growth. You know, you don't see Publix go into an area if there's, if they're not looking for growth. You don't see Chick-fil-A come in if they're not looking for growth. You don't see Home Depot go into Gunnersville or somewhere else that may be landlocked. They're looking for future growth. So it's easy to surmise that Scottsboro needs housing. If you'll switch over. You know, with his own approval, I want you to understand something here. There's, there's been a lot of talk about traffic, and I understand that. With his own approval, if the city council votes and approves the zoning, we feel like we can start construction in quarter four of this year. We're planning on doing this in three different phases with about 50 lots per phase, depending on what we yield after we get all of our detention figured out. So this could be a three-year project or a three-and-a-half-year project. You know, I think some people are concerned that all of a sudden overnight, 150 houses are gonna be behind their house, and there's just this big traffic problem and this big water problem, all these issues. The good thing for us and these people and the city is, is by sectoring this, we're able to identify and correct anything that comes up. It would be easy for us to go in, to start, just start working, putting 150 houses in there. A, we couldn't do that or wouldn't do it because it wouldn't be smart business sense because we don't know for sure what the absorption rate is going to be on housing in Scottsboro, Alabama, because there is just not a lot of new construction in Scottsboro, Alabama. Secondly, because of that, you know, if we get the first sector and all of a sudden we're, we're through with the first sector and we start building, and then there's an issue around the second sector, we're gonna have to address it. And if we go through the third sector, if there's an issue with water or something, we're gonna have to address it. The same thing holds true with traffic. We're not automatically gonna put what some said was 300 cars on, on Larry Drive and Byron Road overnight. You know, as a developer, we're conscious of the fact that more development means more traffic, but I believe all of you sitting here would probably agree that that's a city problem, not a developer problem. However, we've met with the city engineer, we've talked to some of you, we're open to trying to help out with, if there's a traffic issue, if Larry Drive needs to be upgraded or something, you know, we're open to trying to figure that out. As some of you may know, we're also investigating, should I say, other opportunities that may be around that would enable us to eliminate a lot of the traffic off of that area. I can't say that it will happen or won't happen, but I can say that we're working on a plan, and if the growth potential is in this city and we can put the dots together, we can probably eliminate a lot of the issues that they're having. Mr. Maddox spoke about the fact that I probably bring up some statistics, and you can get online, and you can Google whatever you want, and you can find statistics, but what I figured out is, if you go to the source, you get real statistics. And so the statistics that we're bringing in are gonna be from HUD, Housing and Urban Development, from the National Association of Home Builders, from, from groups that deal with these issues. 65% of the new construction in 2023 were built on lots that were less than 9,000 square feet, with 40% of those being less than 7,000 square feet. The proposed lots that we have are about 9,300 square feet, so we're, we're, the reason is because we've got longer lots. They're still 60-foot wide, but they're longer. An interesting statistic you can notice is that smaller lot buildings has declined to 9% in the country. That means that this R1 that, that, that everybody wants in, in this room, that makes up 9% of the construction in the United States. As a developer, I do this as a business, I, I do have a financial interest. I'm not going to develop something that's only going to facilitate at most 9% of the residential market. And I think that what you'll see is, if you look, new market is one of the areas that we talked about, but if you go to Coleman, if you go to Parkville, if you go to DePape, if you go to Priceville, if you go to Gerber, if you go anywhere, you're gonna find that the 60-foot, 70-foot lots are where the market is in the United States today, if you don't mind changing. That's filed by, it's through the National Association of Home Builders in a, in a memo that they sent out in July of 2015. It was mentioned that homeowners don't want small lots. Homeowners don't want small houses. Well, according to National Association of Home Builders, homeowners have been looking for small lots for the last 20 years. And you look at the article that they wrote about what homeowners really want, made in 2024, you'll see that they are looking for smaller homes, and they are looking for smaller lots. That's the reason development of those is controlling residential construction. The average size house started in 2023, it's the lowest in 13, it's been in 13 years. The average size house started in twenty twenty-three, it's the lowest in thirteen, it's been in thirteen years, and it's continuing the downward trend. This is a statistic through the U.S. Census Bureau. This is not a, you know, a biased ruling. This is, this is the Census Bureau that, that, that made this statement. Here's a key thing that I'd like to express. One of the things that was brought up was the fact that, and of course, we all look at social media and some of the things that written on social media. But there was, you know, we mentioned in our, in our planning and zoning meeting that we were looking at a way to make more affordable housing. But one of the things that people do is they hear the term affordable housing and they make their own judgment of what affordable housing is. What affordable housing is, is when you can try your best to be at thirty percent of the cost of a house. When you take the home, the, the mortgage of the house and the utilities of the house, ideally, you want that to be thirty percent of your income. That's quote affordable housing. If you remember when you first built a house, there were some, there were some problems that you had to deal with. When I bought my first house, I had to have ten percent down, and I had to prove that I saved that money, and nobody gave it to me again. We know things have changed a lot, but that's what affordable housing is. Can everybody afford the houses that we're gonna build? Absolutely not. But what I want you to know is, and this is per HUD, affordable housing does not mean low income or government subsidized housing. And I don't want anybody here to have, to have this stigma that what we're trying to do is bring something in that's not going to be accommodating in this community. What we're gonna propose to build will be equal to or better than the majority of what is in this community now. And I know that that's not popular with the people that are behind it, but it's true. What you'll find is that property values increase with new construction. I want, I want, if you want to stretch through real quick, here's some property values, and I can tell you this. If, if, if in the course of the week coming up, if you'd like it, I can fill your coffers full of multiple listings showing where residential property values that are next to a larger density or more dense property, such as the New Market project, such as Coleman projects and all the others, does not adversely affect property values. Those statistics are there. We can show sales, we can show you the sales on both the new construction and the existing construction. I don't know any other way to argue that except for just to show you all the data you want to see of it. One of the, one of the key issues is drainage. One of the things that we noticed is, is, and Mr. Patrick alluded to this, and I, I don't know if anybody actually caught this or not, but this property is lower than the existing properties in the existing neighborhood. This was gonna be a sector. Drainage goes through that property now, okay? So what the people that are living there now that are having drainage issues, one of the things that they may be suffering from is an incomplete drainage system because the drainage, whatever drainage was done on that first couple of seconds was not completed when it's downstream where the property's vacant now. The people that are here, if you ask any of them, what is the solution for the drainage problem you have? Is it coming to the city, asking the city to fix it? I contest that the only hope they have of getting their drainage issues taken care of is if we indeed develop that property to where the, the flow will continue on downstream. We're between their development and the river. The water is going through that property now at a slow rate, and it's gotta work its way to the river. You've got a city engineer, I've gotta pay an engineer a lot of money, a civil engineer, to figure out the drainage issue. We know it, we've already expressed the fact that we're gonna lose lots, but we're gonna do whatever it takes to control our water, and unfortunately, we're gonna have to control their water too. You know, I, I will say this in closing. Mr. Maddox, we had a great conversation, fifty-two minutes worth, okay? And I was out of the country. But, one of the things that Mr. Maddox said is, he said, and I'm not paraphrasing, I'm not speaking for him, but I want to reiterate what was said. As a longtime resident, I have been frustrated at the lack of growth in the city. We need growth. He told me about what he does with the school and, you know, the research and all he does, just not here. That is exactly what NIMBY is. NIMBY is a, is a, is an argument that goes on everywhere. It's not in my backyard. The government has, has addressed NIMBY through law and legislation, but more importantly, it's always the same argument. It's traffic, it's drainage, it's property values. I can, I can tell you, we're gonna do our dead-level best to address every one of those and make everybody happy. Can I answer every question before we get it zoned? I can't because there's a lot of engineering work that's gotta be done, there's a lot of other things that have gotta be done. But we know that it can be done because we know that the water flows downward, and we're below them now, and the river's below us, and somehow, we can get that water to the river.
Thank you, sir. All right, so this is gonna conclude the public hearing. I'll remind everybody, the Alabama state law requires a fifteen-day wait before there can be a vote. So the next actual meeting for the city council will be September ninth that this could be on, and we will put it on that one. So, anybody on the council have any questions or comments? And I, I need the motion. Then we're adjourned.